Evening, everyone. Welcome. It is Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023. This is a regular session of the City of Bloomington Common Council. Welcome, everyone. I'll invite Clerk Bolden to please call the roll.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Scambalory?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Volin?
Here.
And just to note that Councilmember Sandberg and Rallo are not present.
Correct.
So, thank you. So, we'll continue with our land and labor acknowledgement for this evening. I will, or for our general practice, I invite Vice President Piedmont Smith to read that for us.
Thank you. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, and Potawatomi and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana and specifically Bloomington resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity.
Thank you. Let's continue with our agenda summation. We have four sets of minutes to approve this evening from a special session on October 12th, 2022, regular sessions on October 19th, 20th, and November 2nd of 2022. We'll then move into reports. We will take up first reports from council members, then reports from the mayor and city offices. There are two there. One is Compost Up Downtown, the Bead Restaurant Composting Incentive Program report, and then a report from the Community Advisory and Public Safety Commission. We'll then take up any reports from council committees, and then come to our first of two periods of public comment. We'll then take up appointments to boards and commissions. I believe we have several of those this evening. We'll then move into legislation for second readings and resolutions. Included there is Ordinance 2314 to amend Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled "Health and Sanitation Regarding Updating and Increasing Fees for Service and Harmonizing Chapters Four and Five of Title VI for the Bloomington Municipal Code." We'll then move into legislation for first readings. Included there is Ordinance 2315 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled "Administration and Personnel Regarding Administering 2.76.040 Entitled Boundaries to Expand the Service Area of the Bloomington Public Transit Corporation." We'll then come to our second of two periods of public comment. We'll take up matters of council schedule, and then we'll adjourn. So, with that, let's move to approval of minutes.
Yes, Madam President, I move approval of the minutes of October 20th, 2021, the revised minutes of the special session of October 12th, 2022, the minutes of regular sessions October 19th, and November 2nd of 2022.
Second half?
Thank you. We have no one participating virtually, so tonight can be a eyes and... All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those minutes are approved. Let's now move into reports, beginning with reports from council members. I'll start on my far right with Councilmember Flaherty.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you very much. Briefly, if I may, it has been announced, and I'd really like to offer our congratulations to our Safe and Civil City Director, Shatoya Moss. It was announced today that Shatoya is one of the first cohorts of a hundred emerging changemakers selected to participate in the Obama Foundation Leaders USA program. There's a big, long list, and I hope everyone got it and is able to read it. One thing about Shatoya is that she does a lot through the community and family resources of the department. She's a liaison with the Commission on the Status of Black Males, and if many of you didn't know, this was our annual day where we welcome all the kids to Fairview School. There was probably 60 of us out there today or something like that, so very, very good turnout. She's also over, I believe, the Commission of Women, as well as she's a member of, I want to say my own fraternity, but Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, where she has done many things to work with the youth in mentoring, tutoring, and that sort of thing. So, it is very competitive to get into this Obama Foundation Roundtable, and I just really wanted to acknowledge that and say, "Congratulations, Shatoya. Make us proud." I will say, this is a six-month program, and ultimately, she'll get the audience, I do believe, I've heard of President Obama, to share this with some of our young leaders. So, just wanted to acknowledge that and congratulations again.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, just briefly, I represent this body on the Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee of the County Council, and we have been meeting. There have been three meetings so far. We're going through the intercepts, which is one way of looking at involvement with the criminal justice system from prevention all the way to reentry after somebody has been in the system, and then community corrections, which is, you know, parole and ongoing monitoring that sometimes happens. So, we had a meeting this week about Intercept Zero, which is the prevention aspect, and there's a broad agreement, I think, about the importance of prevention and focusing funds there. And just for everybody's information, our next meeting will be on August 7th at 4:30 PM in the Nat U Hill Room in the courthouse. So, everybody's always welcome to come and observe what we do, and of course, if there are any specific feedback. The actual voting members of that committee are county councillors Peter Iverson, Jennifer Crossley, and Kate Wills. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, it's a small thing. I had an opportunity today to visit the public library and in it the place where CATS, which has been televising our meetings since, for longer than almost any city in the world, since 1974, and because I knew that that date was when CATS started, I had always wanted to see a council meeting from that time. And the tapes have now, of course, been digitized, so I went today to inquire about seeing something like that. Well, it turns out that unfortunately, due to a flood, I believe, in the library a couple of decades ago, a lot of the original footage was lost. It's also a tragic fact that in the '70s videotape was not something to be thought of as archived, and so they would tend to tape over tapes that they had just made or recently made of a meeting. So, I'm not really sure what the objective was at the time to televise the meeting, but I did discover that the earliest tape in CATS's possession dates to 1985, and it was helpfully marked as a discussion about the redevelopment of the south side of the square. So, those of you who are familiar with Fountain Square, the south side of the square, that tape is now being digitized for at least me to enjoy, and I hope other people will be interested in seeing that sort of thing as well. But it took somebody going and asking, "Hey, could you digitize the tape for somebody to do it?" So, for what it's worth, we do have a legacy of city council meetings going back to 1985 that we can actually watch, and I, for one, am looking forward to seeing what conditions were like back then. And just to give you all a heads up, and there's a certain couple of people in the room who know that the building we used to be in before this ravishing place was the building that is now the police headquarters, and it's much smaller and less charismatic, and I'm going to have a new insight to what the police headquarters is like when I see that tape. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And I'll finish up for my report. I'd like to extend an invitation to my upcoming August constituent meeting. That's this Saturday, August 5th, at 1:30 PM via Zoom. Those, it will focus on many issues in District Two, but certainly anyone from across the city is welcome to attend. Just point your browser to sueforcitycouncil.com and click on the button that says "Join," and that'll take you into the meeting. So, with that, let's move on to reports from the mayor and city offices. We have our first report from Compost Up Downtown.
Hi, I'm Sean Mia. I am the Assistant Director of Sustainability for the Economic and Sustainable Development Department. This is my first time being at a city council meeting, so it's nice to meet some of you for the first time. I'm here to introduce Earth Keepers. We have Andrea and Ryan Conway, who are the owners, who are the owners of Earth Keepers. They're here to talk about reducing restaurant food waste, business case minus operations, and education. So, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to test my clicker out. Did it work? Is it working?
It was working.
It was.
It was working earlier.
Thank you for the magic touch, Stephen. My name is Ryan Conway.
Andrea Conway.
And we're the owners and operators of Earth Keepers Compost, which is currently in transition to Earth Keepers consultancy, and then also native plant restoration. Also, thank you, you know, as a member of the Shawnee Tribe, I really appreciate hearing the land acknowledgement, and that's something that I had not heard here before, so I really appreciate hearing that, too. So, again, we're the Earth Keepers, and actually, we're here just reporting back on the Compost Up Downtown program that we did in collaboration and funded by the ESD Department last year. As you all remember, some of the background, during the COVID days, the restaurant sector was among the hardest hit of all in terms of the down regulation of their clientele through closures or occupancy restrictions, disruption in the labor pool, logistics were crazy, and so supply chains were nuts in terms of, you know, prices being elevated. And so, in November 2021, we were contacted by Lauren Clemens in ESD to talk about how Earth Keepers might be part of programming that could be helpful for stimulating vitality in the downtown while also meeting environmental and sustainability objectives. So, thinking about the restaurants struggling, we also were thinking, of course, as we always do, about food waste in the county. And so, there's this parody in the problem where we have food, we have a big food waste problem, and we also have restaurants struggling financially. Well, there must be some kind of link there, right? I mean, there's waste that's involved, and that waste can translate into the financials of a small business, you know, especially like one of our local restaurants. So, if we could help them reduce their waste, and they were one of the biggest generators of that waste in the county, if we could help them reduce that waste, then they might be able to save on their bottom line, and this might help stimulate the market for commercial composting in the downtown. Our intuitions were supported by research. REFed is a national food waste consultancy group, and they have a dashboard that projects the economic losses from food waste in a given territory, in this case, in Indiana. And so, food service in itself, you know, was losing, was losing like about $53.1 million a year in absence of food waste tracking, and those costs could be recovered financially by small businesses if those restaurants monitored their procurements and their labor around food waste. They could save between 2% and 6% actually on their procurement costs just by tracking their food waste. And it's important to note that tracking is not hauling. Tracking and hauling are separate. Diverting waste and reducing waste are different things. Reducing waste is an upstream solution that kind of cancels out all of the calories and all of the energy that go into trucking food waste around, turning it into compost or biodigestate. So, the real savings for businesses, the real savings for households, and the real savings for the environment come from the upstream solutions of reducing the waste. So, a big part of our work was to bring consultancy to these restaurants. There's plenty of research out there on food waste and loss and the, like, labor loss that goes into handling food waste, and it just needs to be and needed to be just kind of combined and applied, and that was the bulk of our work. We surveyed, you know, research from across the country and across the world. Even recent UN studies have shown that there's a, you know, 7 to 1 ROI for investing in food, food waste prevention. It's just that the problem with a lot of this research shows that the cost recovery timeline is like two to three years, and the budget of the program only had enough timeline for three months' worth of service. So, we really had to emphasize other benefits to these restaurants that were financial in nature or driving towards their aspirations and goals in terms of sustainability, one of those being that Project Drawdown, a consortium of scientists from across the world that operates a dashboard that ranks the effectiveness of different measures that human society can take to fight climate change now, be they individuals, governments, or private organizations, and they consistently list reducing food waste as like the number one most impactful thing that any organization can do to help fight climate change now. And again, it's reducing food waste, not hauling the food waste somewhere else, which of course, indeed, we were a part of. That's another story. So, in line with the Recover Forward initiatives, we wanted to help the restaurants build a case about employee retention. Nobody in restaurants, and I've worked in plenty of restaurants, likes to take out the garbage at the end of the day because the bags are super heavy. They're like 50 gallons, and it's mixed waste. So, if you have like a plastic knife in there that like cuts the bag, and then you have like food waste juice getting on the ground, you can slip, you can get hurt, and this is reflected in Bureau of Labor Statistics, statistics about, this is, this data, there wasn't much data on small restaurants, but there was data on fast food restaurants. And so, I mean, this ends up posing large liabilities for companies, but also personal liabilities for workers. So, you know, this was, this was a benefit of the program that we were also sharing with these small restaurants. At the time, of course, we all know that the labor pool was very highly mobile, and so companies that stood out for having sustainability programming, IBM surveys showed, were more attractive to people mobile in the labor pool. This is also the case for consumers. Consumers are and were looking for sustainability programming in the places where they shop. They look for those commitments. They put their values, you know, where their dollar is. So, this brings us to the program launch. Our information session launch was March 7th, and we set up a cohort structure so that we thought that to get these 16 restaurants participating, we would do cohorts of four and just do it in quarters across the year. But we ran into a number of challenges in terms of recruiting companies right off the bat, and then after, you know, the geopolitical conflict between Russia and Ukraine escalating, and the interest rate inflation nexus continued, we actually accelerated our recruitment process because we didn't want to go into the winter without having the program completed and on lock because if there was some type of economic disruption, well, then we might not be able to complete the program if the restaurants were suffering due to either increased inflation or lower client demand. So, part of the program, you know, this is just basically what we offered in the physical part of the program, you know, beyond the consultancy with administrators and owners, and beyond the training we did with staff. We did weekly collections. They got small little pails and buckets to work in back of kitchen, at their prep stations and stuff that they would then take outside and aggregate into a rolling trash bin. We provided waste audits. This was actually one of the most scientific and one of the most fundamental parts of the study. As a waste audit, what this is in principle is that you take that roller that you collected, and you dump it out, and you use rakes and hoes to separate categories of things, and this does two things. One, it identifies the types and frequency of contamination that comes into the food waste from the restaurants, gloves, hairnets, forks, knives, onion bags, all sorts of things. But it also shows the restaurants specifically where they can adjust their procurement policy to buy less of things that they're consistently wasting. So, this is all building towards the economic case that if you reduce your waste from the beginning, then maybe you won't have to have us hauling so much at the end. So, again, the savings from reduction being really key there, and we offered them a number of other programs in terms of just supporting them, but that, there's more on that in the report. And we also got a tremendous amount of support from DBI, BDTC in the chamber. I mean, DBI also, especially hands, hands down, because they're so networked with the businesses in the downtown, they were great at helping us get the program messaging out and attracting clients into the program. They themselves actually were in the first cohort of the program, so we're especially grateful to them. And so, this is just going to be a quick visual tour of what some of this work looked like for us. So, we had to do the consulting where we actually present the econometric information and the survey information to the owners and principal managers of these restaurants to get them to understand the business case. Then we have to train the kitchen staff and invite them into the story in terms of what that does for their restaurant and what that does for their team, what it does for the earth, and how to do it properly. We also had to, you know, advertise, so we got pretty some days, and we went to, you know, big fancy meetings, so that was a little bit of fun. But we also did the hard work of the hauling. You can see Andrea right there, you know, at our facility, you know, dumping out. It looks like that's some things from Buffalo Louie's and, yeah, mostly Buffalo Louie's. This is part of the waste auditing. This is separating it into categories. You can see also that, you know, as sad as it can be, food waste can also be very beautiful, so we got some really lovely pics there. Contamination, the scourge of all recycling, the scourge of all waste management systems. This is the stuff that we have to be careful about, that we don't let break any of our food waste processing systems, and that we have to be, and increase our education and consultancy around more auditing. And it looks like, yeah, that was a big Buffalo Louie's day. They were actually like our biggest, best customer. That was really, they were really great and committed and really wild about it. Making compost, and it starts very small, and it ends very big. We got that track loader actually in partnership with IDEM through a grant that they gave us for our past years of program development and service. And with some of the food waste, we fed our animals. You know, we had a flock of chickens and this giant Royal Palm turkey that was kind of like the guard of the flock. We fed people with the eggs that those chickens made. This is us at the farmer's market in 2019, and we liked to deliver to schools, nonprofits, and farms. And this is our team. It wasn't just the two of us. It got, it got a little out of hand there for a little while, but they're all amazing, lovely, wonderful people that put great work into this community to see this mission through, and we're grateful to all of them. So, this is the basic of the results. I'm not going to scratch your eyes by making you have to comb through that. This lists all the participants and the schedules for them and how much they each diverted, but this is more the total. And the biggest figures on the far right there, it's just the totals, and right there in the middle, 40.5 tons of food waste is what we were able to divert, and there's some conversion metrics on like what that means in terms of like CO2 saved or numbers of trees planted, but that's more in the report, and so, yeah, 40.5 tons. So, other successes beyond just the diversion, the tonnage, we raised awareness about the business case. You know, we were able to educate these proprietors about how they can save money and do a good thing for the environment and help their staff and attract clients by reducing their food waste and entertaining our consulting services and research. Through working with DBI and BDTC and Chamber of Commerce, we helped elevate the economic development case for this. This is sector-level loss, so if we can direct sector-level losses, we can actually, you know, boost attraction to the downtown. People will see it as a vibrant place to do business, and if they get the help they need to help trim costs, and especially in this kind of a way. This is, right here is an example of consolidating the research in an actionable way, and not just, you know, in an opaque consultancy report, but this is tailored tactical knowledge deployed to get the mission done and often updated in the course of completing the mission to see it through. We also, we also, as Tom McGlasson here knows, we were able to help start some recycling partnerships between the Solid Waste Management District and some of our clients because a lot of the restaurants in the downtown, they don't recycle, and, and there's market barriers to this, and there's operational barriers to this. So, bringing in composting was just like next level. So, it's like, okay, let's also get you in touch with the Solid Waste District, which has a program, a discounted recycling program, the Green Business Network, that several of these places signed up for. So, we were really happy about that in terms of helping them save money on their recycling and diverting more waste. Sorry. Oh, and also, of course, the labor pool and food service can be highly mobile, so when you're training and instilling concepts in folks that are working in one kitchen or restaurant, they may move on to another one, and they'll bring those operational protocols and that learning and education, that incentive to their next restaurant work, or if they become management, they'll bring those ideals and those ideas and those practices up with them. So, just the educational component across the different segments of the labor pool were important. Of course, we also faced some challenges. In the COVID era, food service economy was devastated, right? I mean, that was that first picture from the HT that we showed. I mean, it was, it was, it was hard for a lot of folks to be aspirational when they were trying to survive month to month. And indeed, not all of our local restaurants necessarily made it through that hump. Some of them made it in a way, in the sense that they were acquired by hospitality groups, marketing groups, to, to survive as restaurants in the downtown, but the removal of local ownership can change some of the perspectives of operations and some of the incentives around promoting local values. So, it was a strange thing to us that a lot of the, the largest hospitality groups with many restaurants in the downtown did not entertain the idea of participating even for free. There was general reluctance. There's 92 restaurants in the Bloomington area, and this is information provided by Lauren Clemens to us. We surveyed 47 of them. We talked to 47 restaurants through emails, cold calls, and actually walking in. Many places got between two, and one restaurant got five in-person visits. We really wanted them. And yet, out of 47 restaurants that we spoke with and shared this research with, only 16 participated. That included two juice bars and a teahouse, and only five stayed to pay. We are skeptical about market tolerance to the independent idea of this at this moment based on this experience. I mean, we got to half of the total pool. There's also persistent food service staff shortages. I mean, there were long periods of time where restaurants were having a hard time keeping normal operating hours and keeping staff, and so when there was staff turnover, whatever we trained them in, they'd forget because, you know, new people don't, didn't get the training, or managers, if a manager left, then accountability and monitoring of fulfilling that training would dissolve. And so, labor mobility at that time and labor rotation at that time really made for a lot of difficulty and cost for us to go back and do a bunch of retraining, recalibration, and having to deal with tons, tons more contamination. That just causes lots of contamination. This is brand-new content. Like I said, a lot of restaurants don't recycle, so jumping next level to composting, we had to help build a lot of operational protocols in, and that's a culture change thing in the industries. There's also individual behavior, and there's a lot of psychology around that. It's a well-studied phenomenon. Why don't we stick to our New Year's resolutions? Well, a lot of us have problems with that because of the value-action gap. It's actually a well-studied behavioral psychology field, and there's a lot of good research we can take from that, some of it specifically on waste behaviors and apply to our next programs and policies. The information is out there. We just need to keep applying it. And of course, the biggest problem we had to deal with was contamination. It's the scourge of all recycling systems. It's the source of the recycling market internationally having tons of problems. I don't know if anyone knows this, but in 2017, China, which was the largest recipient of recyclable waste, especially plastics, created a policy that reduced their contamination tolerance to 0.5% per bale, meaning that they went from importing, I think, 51 million metric tons to 500,000 metric tons in one year. And the US actually, material recovery facilities in the US had an increase of 23% of the amount of plastics that were landfilled. So, contamination is a problem because if you break the place where you send your stuff to get recycled, whether it's food or plastic, it doesn't get recycled anymore, and those operators are the one bearing the brunt of that cost. It's a cost that we externalize, and that creates a moral hazard for people to keep doing it because there's no penalty for doing it. So, this breaks international recycling markets. It can break composting, too. We had really awful experiences with contamination. So, based on all this, our recommendations, apply the known research. We have research. The report that's actually included in the packet is an extensive wrap-up of the latest research in waste management behaviors, waste management, political economy. We did a lot of work just collecting statistics and collecting research. These things can't, they, they have to be applied. The knowledge is out there, and, and we have to maintain the moral rigor and commitment to bring it to to bring it to bear on concrete policy problems and programs in our communities. And then the second biggest thing we have to say is that upstream solutions are so much more effective than downstream solutions. Reducing the waste is what saves the money, and it's what saves on the emissions. Just making the waste go away doesn't save on the money, doesn't save on the emissions, and it creates a moral hazard whereby people are tempted just to make it someone else's problem, maybe some other facility's problem. Because if it goes away, well, maybe that fork can slip in there a little easier, that plastic cup can slip in there a little easier, and maybe the operating costs of that facility goes up, and maybe it goes up until it closes. There are facilities that have closed because of contamination. Madison, Wisconsin, has two facilities that have closed because of contamination. One that was being run by its city, one that was being run by its university. The contamination broke a biodigester that they had, contamination broke a farm composting system that they had. This is an important problem. And in 2018, Kessler Consulting, who came and worked with the city and the Waste District to even discover the food waste problem that we had, identified Madison, Wisconsin as a key comparator that we should be in dialogue with and learning from, so that we can prevent that kind of a situation from happening to us. We need to take the upstream solutions seriously, do consulting and education to help households and commercial businesses like these restaurants save money and save on the emissions rather than kicking it down the pipe. We were more like a backstop. We were like the last resort, where at least it ain't going to landfill, and we were turning it into compost with good, green, sustainable jobs for the, and good compost for the farmers and our local ecologies. So again, I mentioned this before, too, beyond just heeding the perils and promises of our comparator communities, organics recycling is just another mode of recycling. The problems that we have in plastics recycling, et cetera, will be the same problems that we have in organics. So we can study the problems that we have with one and apply them to the next before it becomes a contagious problem. And climate crisis requires mindful movement. It's, it's tempting to want to rush and to scale and fix it now, 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 but we have, yes, limited time, but we have limited tools at our disposal for dealing with these problems. And if we break them or hamper them, we won't have enough tools to, to do the job well and to really make it. So it is important that we learn these lessons, apply the research, see what other people do, and, and focus on upstream rather than downstream solutions. This brings in, I don't want to overwhelm you, thinking in systems, yeah, the hauling system of removing the waste is connecting to the processing system of turning that food waste into compost or something that can be done with it. But then that compost also needs to be distributed, so that the distribution to farmers and landscapers and homeowners is its own separate system. The making and processing of the food waste, I mean, itself is its own separate system, and the hauling of it is its own system. Each of these have a distinct political economy and policy framework that govern them and their dynamics, and we need to see these as linked, because if we focus just on making something go away, then we can break the place where it goes away to, and then it can't go away anymore. So focusing on consulting and education, we're really, really big on the upstream solutions. Building resilience, if we can work with as many local land partners as possible, farmers especially, and the people that can get us in connection with farmers that can use this compost, even if this, even if there's a composting farm facility paired with some other more technologically advanced facility, having more than one is important for critical infrastructure, because if we have a single point of failure for our waste management stream, then that creates a massive and expensive problem. And we have evidence and examples of contamination-based facility failures. In here in Monroe County, I think it was 2018, there were public meetings hosted by the Solid Waste Management District where our former partner, Kevin Huntley of Green Earth Composting Facility on the West Side that closed after his passing a year ago, his facility had to be shut down for weeks because of contamination that was coming in from a prototype pilot from IU stadiums and one of the cafeterias. So we've had it happen here, that a facility has shut down because of contamination. So it's, it's, yes?
Twenty minutes, which is our limit for this section. So could you finish up, please?
Yes, absolutely. And our final thing is just to collaborate. The County Solid Waste Management District is an excellent resource. It's a, it's an issue-specific, inter-local resource, has a great administration and great staff, and that really is the final slide. This is just kind of the end of our era. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions before we move into our second report for the evening? Okay. Seeing none, Mr., oh, I'm sorry.
Briefly, thank you for the presentation. I do want to say that it was a lot. There's a lot there. I'm looking forward to breaking it down, but like, there was a lot there. And I, I'm not sure all my questions could be answered tonight, so I'll be looking forward to reading the report. Thank you. Thank you both.
Please reach out. We'd be happy to talk with you about it.
Thank you both so much. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Pete Monssmith?
Well, it's not a question, but I just wanted to say, since I'm the city council representative to the Solid Waste Management District Board, I want to ensure to everybody that this is at the top of mind for the board members, that we are looking at ways to resuscitate a composting program in the county, and we're working with Sean and others with the city. And Mr. McGlasson has been researching some options, so we are seeking to continue the practices that this pilot program has, has taught people. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. and Ms. Conway. But, and thank you, Ms. Mia. I'm sorry. I appreciate it. So, okay. We have a second report that we're looking forward to this evening. We are obviously at our limit for the section on Mayor's Report, so I'd like to request an extension or a motion to extend the time for this section of the agenda to 7:30. Would that make sense? Looking to members of the CAPS Commission here. Okay. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
With all due respect to the CAPS Commission, nay. Thank you.
And any extension? Seeing none. That passes, so we will extend this section until 7:30 PM, and I'll invite members of the CAPS Commission to come forward. Welcome.
Thank you.
Well, hello, everyone, and thank you very much for allowing us some extra time today to present the work of the CAPS Commission from 2022 and 2023. I'm Jason McCollough, and I'm joined today by co-commissioners Kamala Brown Sparks and Najla Rautsong, as well as some commission members who are present in the council chambers this evening.
Today, we will describe the work completed in committees, the work completed by the Commission, and then answer any questions that council members have about our work.
Everybody, in the conference room. Partnering with Monroe County History Center to organize a public event on how to conduct Black genealogical research in fall 2023. The purpose of this event is to support Black people in the US in doing oral history interviews and conducting genealogical research, allowing Black residents to have a stronger sense of connection to the community and enabling the entire community to have a greater understanding of the role that slavery in the US South may have played in shaping our community. So far, we have identified an expert speaker on this topic and are coordinating to plan dates, location, and other details with the Monroe County History Center.
That was that one. Forward one more. Yeah. Thanks. The Research Committee engaged the Student Agile Response Team, the START Team, volunteers from Indiana University to gain insights to improve access to housing in Bloomington. Recommendations from that team include having the city take a more active role in developing very low-income housing. The major project of our committee worked, worked on that report. And as a community partner, we recruited that team of undergraduate researchers from the Kelly School to perform original research into the improvements in our current state of housing. What they produced was a comparative market analysis in response to a meeting they pursued with John Zodi, the Director of Housing and Neighborhood Development. Their full report is available on our webpage, but the important thread is how we, as a Commission, have been utilizing connections between IU and our Commission, essentially erasing the margin that divides the town and gown. In the same way, the research we presented last year had partnered with Professor Donell Byrd to use two classes to do research. This year's participation with the START program provides an avenue for future research to utilize the capacious energy of undergraduates in our community rather than leaving them in the margins.
The Alternative Public Safety Outreach Committee was created as a temporary group working on behalf of the Commission to organize the Public Safety Town Hall event, conduct key stakeholder outreach, and prepare the 2023 Alternative Public Safety Report that was recently published on the CAPS Commission website.
The Committee compiled three years of CAPS Commission research and community outreach, including consulting with scholarly and other experts, reports, case studies, and best practices around the US, and quantitative data.
We would like to emphasize that this report does not merely represent the ideas of the Committee or even the CAPS Commission. The report is based on the evidence and outreach gathered by volunteers from the Community Justice and Mediation Center, Help Ourselves Mutual Aid Group, the Net Impact Club of Indiana University, and the START Team. In particular, we included life experiences and perceptions gathered from 45 community stakeholders and members who attended the Public Safety Town Hall. Also, 13 high-level key stakeholders of community safety, who include the chiefs of police and of fire. We also included several other key city department heads and community leaders from university, business and advocacy backgrounds, and three small groups of safety marginalized stakeholders at the overnight shelters and soup kitchen, who serve some of our community safety needs. In summary, the report is a community-led response to the most urgent public safety needs perceived in the city.
To ensure the healthy and continuous functioning of the Commission in times of conflict among members, the Commission passed conflict resolution procedures for members that detail mediation procedures utilizing CJAM Center, contingencies, and recommendations for removal in case of members who refuse to resolve conflicts. This motion demonstrates organizational learning by the Commission to utilize the valuable experience of past members in ways that will improve the experiences of future members.
This year, the major accomplishment of the Commission was passing the 2023 Alternative Public Safety Report. This report briefly details the history of our Commission, the mission and founding principles of our work on alternative public safety, the process we followed, and the recommendations we have made based on the community's perceived needs and priorities.
The process of reaching our recommendations loosely followed the steps of design-centered entrepreneurship as developed by Min Basadur and Michael Goldsby, where researchers first identify a problem and its key stakeholders loosely based on known information and perceptions, and then perform both qualitative analysis on existing data and qualitative research with stakeholders to uncover all the relevant facts, perceptions, and information related to the problem. Next, we redefined the problem using the new information, uncovering the fact-finding stage. Finally, we assessed all the situations uncovered at the research stage, as well as all solutions and ideas presented by stakeholders, to identify which solutions will be best to solve the problems we identified.
We chose this process because it is a proven way to develop innovative, evidence-based solutions to complex problems in a manner that includes the perspectives of all key stakeholders. Our Committee enhanced the design-centered entrepreneurship process by conducting a root cause analysis in order to better understand the dynamic systems at play between the root causes that drive the public safety problems in our community, the causal mechanisms that allow the problems to continue to worsen, and the symptoms that make these problems increasingly apparent.
This research stage of the process was mostly conducted in 2021. In 2022, we completed this stage by selecting five of the best models of alternative public safety programs in the US to use as case studies, and conducted personal interviews with the operators and designers of those programs to learn what worked best in other cities similar to Bloomington. This allowed us to compile some initial ideas for improving community safety that we then tested improved and refined in our outreach stage.
In our outreach, we conducted personal interviews with 13 high-level individuals in the operations, advocacy, business, and political spheres of community safety. We asked stakeholders questions about their experiences and perceptions of public safety in Bloomington. We then coordinated with CJAM to hold a Public Safety Town Hall live event that was also recorded and posted to the city's YouTube, where community members were invited into small breakout groups to share their experience with public safety. We then conducted outreach with small groups of safety marginalized residents at the locations of the local service providers of overnight shelters and community meals.
The Commission's findings took a harm-reduction approach in viewing marginalized people as those who are the most harmed by our existing public safety system, either actively through activities like racial profiling or the criminalization of drug users, or passively through the neglect of their basic safety needs. We found that both the local community members and the local data consistently identify unhoused people, people experiencing mental illness, and drug users as the most safety marginalized groups of people in Bloomington. They are the people steering the ship in this naval metaphor. The Commission also found that Black residents and other people of color are nationally more likely to be represented across all of these groups, which indicates that our existing city's public safety system marginalizes racial minorities. Therefore, designing a better system that directly serves the safety needs of these three groups is one way to substantively improve racial equity in Bloomington, especially in safety and justice outcomes.
Next, the Commission utilized the research and outreach we had performed to create a root cause analysis to better understand how these three groups of people represent emergent symptoms of three structural root causes. The first is increasing economic pressure caused by market forces, the material deprivation of access to resources, and the negative psychological stigmas. These three root causes work together, creating harmful dynamic feedback loops in society, which makes these three marginalized groups easier to fall into and harder to escape from every day. They represent the bottom of the iceberg, which is the root cause of the top part of the iceberg, and which is the most dangerous part of icebergs to packing ships, because they are unseen, yet powerful and inescapable forces.
After tracing each of the symptoms back to the systemic root causes, the Commission identified three key problem areas or systemic leverage points that can be resolved to create a more agile and responsive public safety system, allowing our community to adapt and respond accordingly to changing safety needs. These are represented by the trees on the map, which might also be icebergs, which represent structural obstacles the city must avoid to reach our safety goals. The first problem is the persistent and growing barriers to access of important safety resources in our community. The second is the confusing, frequently conflicting goals of existing city departments who are currently tasked with improving public safety, preventing them from prioritizing human safety in all of their operations. For example, we found that competing city goals of law or code enforcement and neighborhood and economic development at times undermine or even actively harm the goals of community safety. The third problem area we identified, and maybe the most important one, is a functional gap around coordinating a strategic response to these growing public safety threats. In our outreach, we found that despite all the stakeholders agreeing that a better coordinated response is needed to resolve these problems, no existing city departments view coordinating such a response as within their purview. So we then incorporated the findings, next slide. We then incorporated the findings back into our initial problem question to ask, how might Bloomington design, fund, and maintain a public safety system that, one, might Bloomington design, fund, and maintain a public safety system that, one, removes all barriers to access of important resources needed for community safety, especially housing, mental health care, and drug treatment? Two, resolves all institutional conflicts that arise between community safety and other goals in the interest of safety? And, three, closes the institutional gap in a way that enables the community to take a more responsive approach to resolving our safety needs.
The main recommendation in the report that will solve these systemic problems is the creation of a new Department of Community Safety and Resilience, or a DCSR, that will prioritize upholding community safety above all other competing goals. This recommendation is contingent on the results of a feasibility study to be carried out by an independent firm to assess the economic, organizational, and legal implications of such a department. In the immediate and short term, the primary role of the DCSR will be to create a non-coercive, highly-trained peer responder team who can respond to the growing numbers of service calls to 911 for low-level, nonviolent calls for help that do not require an armed law enforcement officer response, such as drug overdose, mental health crises, or elderly and infant care. This right-care, right-person model of crisis response is aimed at improving justice outcomes, yet it has also been demonstrated in other cities, such as Eugene, Oregon, and Denver, Colorado, to reduce both overall costs and crime. Why do we need a new department for this? It's true that this team will essentially support and improve the foundation set by existing city departments of police, fire, and community and family resources, and other departments who have already striven to prioritize our community's fundamental safety and resilience needs in their work. However, each of these departments lacks the explicit role of coordinating a citywide strategic approach to community safety, resulting in these problems that have continued to grow over time, despite the laudable and innovative efforts of these existing departments. Furthermore, the law enforcement-led crisis response protocols are perceived by the most marginalized stakeholders as excluding or even threatening their safety needs, effectively rendering them without access to emergency services. Allowing the DCSR to collaborate with existing fire and police departments to design safety-focused and mental health clinician-informed dispatch protocols will actively include the safety needs of the most marginalized people back into our community's emergency response services in a way that is impossible in the existing organizational structure for the reasons we have already mentioned. And it will allow the existing police and fire departments to focus their resources and time on their primary functions, which are preventing and solving crimes, fires, and serious accidents.
Besides this critical short-term role, however, the DSCR also has a fundamental long-term role. As the world around our city changes and the threats to our community's safety evolve over time, the DCSR will maintain public data dashboards that track, anticipate, and show it is responding to these threats. Once emerging service needs are identified, the DCSR will work to remove all barriers to access these activities, such as forming partnerships with service providers, developing the capacity of those providers in the services most needed in our community, and securing sustainable funds for them from federal, state, and other sources. Organizationally, the DCSR will enable the city to combine several of the most important safety-related services into one department, whose main objective is human safety, while working to identify and resolve competing goals that exist in other departments that directly impact safety. Unlike any existing city departments, the DCSR will have the explicit responsibility to coordinate a strategic response to reduce the most serious threats to our community safety. In short, a DCSR is the most efficient, cost-effective, and socially-just way for Bloomington to improve safety for all of its residents.
Next slide. In addition to reducing crime, costs, and injustice, a DCSR is expected to improve job satisfaction and staff retention of other staff or safety-related departments, who will no longer be expected to respond to crisis situations and long-term problems that are outside of their agency's main purview. It will also allow our city to become a model for community safety in Indiana and in the broader United States. Finally, we want to emphasize that this is not a recommendation for a top-down approach by the city to directly provide more kinds of services, but to consolidate, coordinate, and streamline the safety-related services that are already provided in the city, but in a way that will use evidence-based approaches to reducing the greatest threats to public safety in our community.
The feasibility study is expected to cost between forty and sixty-five thousand dollars, and a public audit could cost another twenty to fifty thousand. If this sounds like a lot of money, consider that the city paid just one consulting firm well over two-hundred thousand dollars in the last three years to make organizational assessments of city departments, with several of those reports costing upwards of fifty thousand dollars just to assess one department. Furthermore, BPD has requested and had approved a net increase of fifty percent of its budget over the last four years, from 2019 to 2023, including a thirty-one percent increase in 2022 and a twelve percent increase in the 2023 budget. Dedicating these relatively small amounts of funds now to conduct the next steps of due diligence in creating a DCSR will allow Bloomington to begin utilizing city resources to enable our community to provide for our own safety needs and to solve our own problems in ways that have been shown to do the least harm to marginalized community members.
The CAPS Commission is committed to continuing to facilitate this process of community problem-solving by conducting community outreach and creating an RFP or RFQ, selecting a firm, and ensuring it has access to the information needed to conduct its work. We also look forward to hearing your ideas on what should be included in a feasibility study. Overall, our constant aim in this work is to ensure that the community members whose lives are most impacted by these decisions will have the greatest control over them. We especially welcome your advice and guidance on improving this aspect of our work, as well as any other suggestions the council has for the Commission. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you all very much. We have about a minute and a half or two minutes for questions. Are there any questions from council members? May we follow up with the Commission independently if we have questions and comments?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we would welcome that.
I'm sorry?
We would welcome that.
Great. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, there's so much happening in my mind, I can't really formulate a question in two minutes, let alone listen to your answer. But I really appreciate your hard work, and I did not realize until tonight that you had a report on the alternative, from the alternatives to public safety, on your website, I guess since July 6th. So I just went to that and I downloaded it. So I'll be reading that and getting back to you. Thank you very much.
I had to have a quick question. The purpose of the CAPS Commission was to do pretty much precisely what you've done, this report, which is to sort of summarize the problem and to recommend a solution. It might stand to logic that your next step is to disband, but I don't think that's in order at all. What do you think is the next phase of the CAPS Commission now that you've reached this initial conclusion? And can you answer that briefly?
I think like the feasibility study.
And the reaching out.
Yeah, and outreach, and education.
I'll say, yeah. So the feasibility study that we recommend will need follow-up, and so we think that will feed back into things.
And we'll have to make the RFP and RFQ with community members.
Yeah. We continue to work with community members to make the RFP and RFQ, and we're still doing outreach. We only got a small segment of the unhoused community and other marginalized community members, and so we're continuing to follow up with that.
So in other words, your role is to dig deeper into the data? This is just sort of a cursory overview of what needs to be done, and that there's deeper reports to follow?
Yeah, I think our report represents that we've done the due diligence that warrants spending the cost of the feasibility study and taking the next steps towards examining the feasibility of this approach. We hope so anyway. And in addition, we hope to increase the educational efforts by the Commission. One of the recommendations in the report actually is for our own Commission to continue and actually expand and do more regular outreach at those locations where safety marginalized people frequent in our community, because that's one lesson we learned from our outreach of this report, is that reaching those people does require us to go to those locations, and that that is extremely valuable outreach that we collected at those locations.
That's the answer I hope to hear. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rautsong, Ms. Brown Sparks, Mr. Mahalik. Thank you very, very much for being with us tonight. That completes the reports from the mayor and city offices. That takes us to council committees. I'm not aware of any reports forthcoming tonight, seeing none. That brings us to our first of two periods of public comment. This is for items not on our legislative agenda this evening, so if you have comments on ordinance 2314, or ordinance, just ordinance 2314, we'll have an opportunity for that when we actually hear that piece of legislation. So this period of public comment, I see Mr. MG here in chambers. Are there others?
Maybe Charlotte over there.
I'm sorry, what?
Charlotte, sitting at the desk.
Okay, yes, I see two who would like to make, three who would like to make comments. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, members of the public are joining us via Zoom and would like to comment, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom, which you can do by clicking the Reactions tab or the More tab in your control bar. You can also let us know you'd like to speak by sending the meeting host a chat. I see one hand raised at the moment.
Okay, so that takes it to five. Let's say four minutes per commenter. You'll notice that there is a timer up on screen that will help you paste your comments accordingly. So with that, let's actually begin here in chambers before we go to Zoom. Ms. Zillo, please.
Thank you very much for the opportunity of speaking. I hope you can hear me. For years and years and years, I've been concerned about these things that you've been struggling with, and when I heard that there was such a committee being requested to act from the city council, I was very happy to hear that. And some of the members of the group came to talk to me, and we discussed the intention and the findings that they've made, and I'm here to endorse them one hundred percent. It seems to me one of the issues we've always had in this community, as people have had, is that there are a lot of things going on that they don't get to handle, and it's too often from the top to talk about these that are at the bottom. Not that that's a bad thing, being at the bottom shouldn't be taken as a negative thing, but the people who lived experiences talking about the needs seems to me absolutely on the contrary, and they come up with a very coherent and well-written report, and I'm sure to support and encourage you to support it as well.
Thank you, Ms. Zillo. Mr. Lucas, who do we have on Zoom?
On Zoom, we have Jim Shelton.
Okay. Mr. Shelton, welcome. If you would please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have four minutes.
Yes, my name is Jim Shelton. I'm with the chamber, but I'm speaking at the moment on behalf of court-appointed special advocate for CASAs. Just want to alert you and the public that our CASAs fall training will start on September 19th, run through October 19th. Applications will be due in just about a month, on September 8th. The training, they are going to try different hours to see if this makes available to more people. It'll be on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So the trainings have usually been in the evening, but the staff hopes this will open it up to some more people. We do have children right now in this court system because of interviews and the lack that do not have a volunteer to serve as their CASAs. So we invite the public to please consider that. You can go to monroecountycasas.org, click on the volunteer link and learn all the details, or you can call 333-2272 and talk to a staff member. So thank you for the opportunity to share that information.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Let's come here in chambers. Welcome. If you would state your name for the record, please, and then you'll have four minutes.
Good evening, Madam President, council members, distinguished staff. Always nice to follow Jim Shelton. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Just a little bit to unpack from today. It was great to hear the Earth Keepers' report. I know I am well-educated just by that collaboration and what they were able to bring to the community as far as elevating the conversation on some tactical applications on food waste. And it was great to be part of the CAPS report there. They reached out to the chamber, and we did take part in that. And I just want to say that CATS is the reason I am part of, and a local government junkie for twenty-eight years ago, I just started watching it, and still talk with Iris Kiesling and other former council members regarding their tenure there. So I just want to make that brief note. I noted last week on the CIP, the Capital Improvements Board, the governing structure for the Convention Center expansion, and what that sort of entails, and what we were hoping for is sort of a swift action from the council on getting an appointment made. And I just want to appreciate that you set together a three council-member committee put forth with this task, with some due diligence, and going for a qualified candidate that is both able. I think this is a great start. It's my hope that the mayor will follow suit with opening up the application portal. The council appointee will be joining the likes of John Wyckard, Joyce Pulling, and my boss, chamber president Eric Spoonmore. So I just want to encourage the public to put in the application for that, anybody interested in hospitality and just the good of the community. And then the next item I wanted to bring up was the community survey of 2023 that was brought up last week. It's my thanks to the NRC for both presenting and doing the work and conducting all of the research involved. You know, in the coming weeks, I'll be probably pointing out to some sort of less-than-admirable data within that report, but today I just want to bring up some of the positiveness of the survey and the quality of the light that we hold dear here, where three-fourths of the respondents did say it was good to excellent. And that's where I come here before council meetings to try to improve and try to keep is that thing called quality of life that we hold so dear. And that's, you know, that's public safety, that's the aesthetics of the community, so it all kind of goes into that, and we still have that, and we hold that dear. The other thing I wanted to say is the city staff who were singled out in there, and I wanted to just say my personal satisfaction with them. I just provided an email to Scott Peterson over at Twin Lakes on the job that he does. I know Public Works will be speaking later, and the job they do on sanitation is amazing, and Michael Large and all of Adam Weiss and all the group there do a wonderful job. So it's important to note that I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Mr. Lucas, just so I can stay on track, anyone else on Zoom? Okay, thank you, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. Please state your name for the record, please, and then you'll have four minutes.
My name is Nicholas Foiles. I'm the executive director of the Indiana Recovery Alliance here in Bloomington, Indiana. Thanks for having me. Like I said, I'm here as the executive director of the Indiana Recovery Alliance. I'm here to represent those that do not have the privilege to be here to speak for themselves. I have the distinct pleasure to serve a population that rarely gets a voice. They are often suffering from one or several of society's most debilitating problems: incarceration, drug misuse, mental illness, HIV or HCV infection, and/or homelessness. All are curable or treatable problems, and yet most of our population that I serve are inflicted with one or many of these problems, and it is my pleasure to speak for those who can't come here to speak for themselves. Not only are there solutions to these problems, but a lot of them are the result of poor treatment options. I was asked by the CAPS board to discuss these with them and to give my opinion, whatever that might be. I was born and raised in Bloomington. I was born and raised in Bloomington. I've been through every side of this, been in the jails, been in the prisons, been in recovery now for a long time. I serve the population that no one hears about. I hear the population that are dying, I hear the population, I serve the population that are unhoused and can't find housing. Things like stopping systemic incarceration for small victimless crimes is a huge barrier or a huge change to what the outcomes are for these people. You know, small petty crimes that they don't deserve long sentences for. There are other treatment options that are way more viable. Evidence has already laid this out, as the CAPS board has said. The main thing I, I'm really, it's funny, it's the first time I've ever been here and I didn't think I'd be nervous. I'm nervous, it's funny. The idea that we look at these things and we think, oh, a CAPS report and it goes on and, and we see the report and for me, it's visceral. It's every day, you know? I lose usually one to three participants within a given five or six month period. All curable problems, all things that can be solved by something like this that would set a precedent for having people treated like human. Charlotte Zillo said something about connection and like that's all it is, these people just need connection. Something like the CAPS board could serve for my people, the people that I take care of every day, to have better outcomes in their lives. There are poor treatment options in Indiana. There are, they are all usually for profit or far away out of our tenure or of our reach, you know? And I just think that something like this could provide the people that I serve better outcomes and keep them alive, hopefully. And that's, I mean, I could talk for another minute, but that's pretty much all I had to say, is that not one of those people is going to be here to speak for themselves. So I'll be here to speak for them and that they're, they're just want to be housed, connected and treated, you know? That's it. And so if this serves in any way to do that, those three solutions they labeled when they went there, I was watching them as we started talking about this, and they talk about removing all access to bear, removing all barriers to access of housing, drug treatment and mental health care. That's a hard thing to do, but we could do small things that made huge impact, you know? We have 300 homeless people here yearly for the past three years. We could whittle that down, you know? Resolve institutional conflict between creating priorities and closing the institutional gap around coordinating a strategic response to changing threats to public safety. I'm part of a national coalition that has seen that done in three cities with absolute startling results. And I'm not going to speak over the minute, but thank you very much for having me.
Mr. Foiles? And did we have another commenter here in chambers? If, if not, that's fine. I just, okay, welcome.
My name's Donna Storm and I've worked in-
Okay, could you pull the microphone a little closer, please?
Yeah, I'm not very used to public speaking, sorry about that. My name's Donna Storm. I've worked in social services most of my life and I work with middleway house, a tree house specialist. I just want to encourage you to really look at some of the personal stories, personal little paragraphs in that CAPS report. It's a long report, but just listen to the people. We have a T-shirt that says, "Believe Survivors" and another one that says, "Support Survivors." It's all about listening to the people that this is really happening to and that's part of what the CAPS program is trying, CAPS Commission is trying to get to happen. And that's all I really have to say. I really want to support the work that they've done and I'm hoping that it carries forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Storm. Anyone else here in chambers? I'm not seeing anyone. Mr. Lucas, anyone on Zoom? Okay, that'll conclude our first of two periods of public comment and that takes us to appointments to boards and commissions. I believe we have several tonight, any from interview team, all?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Take my glasses off so I can read, how about that? The Human Rights Commission, as many of you will know, we merged the city's commission and the county's commission. And so what we're going to do tonight, at least Team A, it's a housekeeping appointment that we'll make for those currently serving on the commission and the need for them to continue. But before I get to the motion, we'll have two people to appoint this evening. And I had the pleasure of talking with one of the commissioners and not only is this a housekeeping matter, but I think it is a matter of consistency. Every one of the commissioners are currently into their own projects and looking into some of our human rights issues within the city and the county. So I think not only is it the right thing to do, but it's the just thing to do to, for continuity with regard to that. Now, having said all that, I'd like to move that we reappoint Emma Williams, seat C1, and this is for the Human Rights Commission. Her current term is from February 1st of '23 until January 31st of '25. I'd also like to move that we appoint Byron Banker to seat C2 and his appointment is from February 1st of 2022 and it will end on January 31st of 2024.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Team B.
Madam Chair, because our, the person we appointed to seat C2 of the Traffic Commission, Megan Bankowski, declined it because she has been appointed to the Environmental Commission. Team B would like to nominate Kathleen Fields to seat C2, who was interviewed and was considered a backup.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Team C.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. On behalf of Team C, I would like to make a motion to appoint Karen Duffy to seat C3 of the Historic Preservation Commission.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. And thank you to those individuals who are willing to serve. Anything else under boards and commissions? Okay, that takes us to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2314 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Yes, ordinance 2314 to amend Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Health and Sanitation regarding updating and increasing fees for service and harmonizing chapters four and five of Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance makes several changes to Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code to bring the title in line with changed local practice to increase service fees, to clarify references and to harmonize current practices with the city code.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2314 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. You're, you're O for two. Thank you, and I believe we have Mr. Weisson with us.
Good evening, folks. I'm Public Works Director for the City of Bloomington, always an honor and a pleasure to be here. I'm just going to make a few brief comments and then turn it over to Michael Large, our Special Projects and Operations Manager, to go through a few slides from last month. But we were here with the council back in June with some different rate structures under consideration of which we did not have a positive vote on that. After working with several council members and reviewing some of the models and hearing some of the comments from the council, we've adjusted the rate structures to go for a longer period of time in which the general fund support would be reduced. So we would do that between 2024 and 2029. And also are making some adjustments to the cart exchange fees that we heard from the council as well. So I'll turn it over to Michael. He's going to just run through a few slides. We're not going to go through all the slides we did last month, but offer some comments and slides on what we're requesting tonight and then we'll be here to answer any questions. So, Michael?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Large. I'm the Operations Manager for the Department of Public Works. Just going to run through some quick slides, many of them you've seen before, but we will have a conversation about them afterwards if you like. So the increased solid waste disposal and recycling, processing fees continue to increase year to year. Increased fees for recycling, processing and solid waste disposal, combined with the increased tonnages, have resulted in overall increased disposal and processing costs from 2017 through 2022. In addition, increased operational costs associated to supply costs, fuel costs, vehicle maintenance costs and utilities have been ongoing and absorbed on an annual basis at the expense of capital replacement. Not keeping up with needed investment on capital asset replacement for trucks. Instead of one truck purchased for replacement each year, we have only been able to purchase one every other year. Given the heavy duty use of these vehicles, sanitation trucks should be on a seven-year replacement cycle. And we are currently on a 10 to 12 year cycle, which will only exacerbate maintenance costs over the course of time. Want to celebrate some of the successes, though, from the sanitation modernization program. Resident satisfaction with garbage collection has increased as shown in the results of the community from 2017 to 2021, from 78% to as high as 83% in the 2021 survey. Diversion rates continue to increase also from 2017 of a 32% diversion rate to 35% in 2022, which now exceeds the EPA standard nationally. In addition, workers' compensation and serious injuries have significantly been reduced. From an annual high point of nearly $170,000 in total workers' compensation costs in 2016 to a low point of $10,655 in annual costs in 2021, this is clear evidence that the new system is successfully reducing injuries. Given the rising cost of operations, rates need to be adjusted quite simply to meet operational costs and to properly invest in our capital replacement of vehicles. After the 2023 budget hearings, the administration heard from several council members that were interested in exploring a reduction of the amount of general fund support to the sanitation division of Public Works. As you can see from this chart, that amount that has been supported by the general fund has hovered right around $1 million since 2018 with a high of $1.107 million in 2022. Working with council members after the most recent conversation in June, we have now provided this new model here that consistently places price per gallon evenly, equitably across the board from year to year and once again, reducing the amount of time for, excuse me, increasing the amount of time from three years to a six-year period of the reduction of the subsidy. Finally, the proposed adjust fees include additional pickups. It's quite simply just doubling of those prices in addition to an increase in what we charge for large item and appliance pickups. I will give the floor back to Mr. Weisson at this time, if you have any questions.
Just a final comment here. So as Michael mentioned, the new rate structure, it's over six years where that general fund support gets reduced. And we also did hear from the council in June about going to a price per gallon that is equal for each of the different cart sizes. Previously, we had a lower price per gallon for the smaller sizes and a higher for the largest size. We heard from the council that they wanted to make that more equitable across the three cart sizes, so that's what we've done here. One other clarification, just from the conversation last month, just on numbers, we're really focusing on the accuracy of numbers in Public Works and wanted to just, when we talked last month, we often refer to the 13,500 accounts that we have. The rate structures are actually based on a number that's 14,000, 14,680, and that's the number of carts we have that we're charging for in the field. So that's where some discrepancy in just language and numbers was happening last month. So basically what that means is there's 13,500 paying accounts, but some of those accounts have multiple carts for multiple units or multiple carts for just one unit. So when we actually figure out the rate structure, we're at that number, not the 13,500. The rate models from last month were also based on that number, but I kept referring to the account numbers at that 13,500 rate. So with that, we will turn it over to the council for any questions you may have and are happy to answer any this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Weisson and Mr. Large. Council member questions? I see Council Member Volan and then we'll go to Council Member Sims.
Thanks for the report.
The presentation, rather. You caught me at multiple carts for a single unit. What is an example of a unit that would ever have multiple carts? Thought the principle was one to one for unit.
Large families. We've got several, several addresses that have two of the 64 gallons. It's just, that's, that's happened over time. The most, the majority of that difference between 13,500 and 14,600 is multiple units at one address. That's the vast majority of it. We do have a few-
Duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes.
Exactly. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. I'll start off with multiple addresses at a building. So that's a single payer? If you have multiple carts in some apartments within a building, is that considered a paying account?
So, let me try to-
To make up the difference between the carts and paying accounts.
Yeah, so if it's 401 North Main Street, units A, B, C and D, it could be on one account but have four sets of carts for the different units at that address.
Okay, we have a lot of that?
Yes.
For to make up?
That difference between 13,500 and 14,600, absolutely.
Okay, I have more questions, if that's okay. I just popped up with this conversation. One of the other aspects of what we're talking about tonight is the, the cart exchange fee and it was $50 and I think you suggested it go down to 25.
Yes, it's actually, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead. I was just going to say what? That is a suggested reduction. What was your rationale when raised? I think it's a good thing, but what's the rationale there? Was there some cost to service study done to verify that cost?
Yeah, so the moving from 50 to 25 is actually not in the order ordinance. It's been set as just policy within, by the board, but the rationale is just the cost to actually have the staff, the vehicle, the fuel for the exchanges. We've always had, at the $50 rate, we weren't covering the cost of that and the cart itself. We do have a pretty decent inventory right now. We were thinking about, and just to make it easy, we, we went with the $25 rate for the cart exchanges. We expect the number of cart exchanges to go up as we've reduced that cost, but we also considered having it stay the same at $50 if you were going from a medium cart to a large cart, for example, or a small to a medium, but we are just going to do 25 across the board to not offer any confusion there.
Okay, and what were some of the things that made up that cost?
So it's the labor, it's the vehicle, the miles traveled, the fuel. So that, that's what that cost is.
Benefits?
Huh?
Employee benefits, is that part of it?
Oh, yeah. The full cost of the employee and yes.
Okay, later on, I might like to talk with you and see that.
How that breaks down exactly?
Yeah, I mean, close enough, but if you got all that.
One more.
I'll wait for round two, thank you.
Okay, additional round one questions? Round two, or one, round one, Councilmember Spur.
Thank you very much, Adam. Mr. Weisson, I appreciate it. Is there ever, you know, we talked about the, the different pressures that are cost, that cost more and has there ever been a discussion of or an exploration of reducing costs for the, the overall operations that then you might not have to raise the fees? You know, has there ever been that kind of a thought?
We're certainly trying to be as prudent as possible with sanitation division. A lot of the costs are just outside of our control, disposal costs, recycling, processing fees. The majority of our budget is really a controlled cost, outside of our control in that way with the disposal and processing. Labor is the vast majority of the budget at sanitation as well. You know, we can't do this with fewer people. We could probably use some more back office staff, honestly. Michael spends about, right now, 80% of his time working with sanitation. The one thing when we moved to this system that we- The one thing when we moved to this system that we didn't really recognize in the case studies we were looking at was the amount of time we devote to cart management and software management. So maintaining the software system, the hardware for the software system is a big chunk of time that we didn't really recognize, and then the cart management, making sure we've got the right carts at the right addresses, repairing carts, lids, wheels, et cetera. But, you know, Councilmember, we were often, you know, trying to do, we're trying to be as prudent as possible there. I don't see any major areas for cost reduction. If fuel prices went down, that would be great. That'd be a real big help to us, but so many of them are outside of our control of costs that, you know, I think we're doing the best we can down there.
Thank you, Mr. Wason.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wason. So this is a question I asked via email, but just for the public record, I wanted to ask it again. So I noticed in the new pricing, monthly cost per cart, the, it is spread over five years, but the year-one increase is significantly larger than the subsequent increases, like about 30%, and then subsequently about 12%. Can you, oh, I see, 34%, and then 12. Can you explain why that is?
Well, it's top-heavy for a couple of reasons, and I think, and I appreciate Councilmember Flaherty working through all this with us, but, you know, if we're trying to keep that general fund rate, as the costs have increased and we're trying to keep that general fund support amount no higher than it currently is, that's going to require us to have that kind of initial jump, and then in the subsequent years, we'll be able to have quite as high of increases over time. But it's really just to try to maintain that level of general fund support, knowing our costs are probably even going to be higher next year as well.
Okay, I see. So it's the, we can also think about it as, correct me if I'm wrong, this is covering the increased costs, but not, so for the changes for 2024, the increase would cover the increased costs of providing the service without reducing the subsidy from the general fund? And the subsequent increases would be the decreasing the subsidy from the general fund?
That was a lot.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, you're on the right train of thought there, yes. We need to capture those increased costs we've incurred over the last couple of years with a bigger increase right now so that we don't increase general fund support in 2024. Those subsequent years, take into account the, you know, more of the 3% to 5% on CPI and other things, as well as reducing the general fund support. So we're trying to create a model that takes into account what we expect to be increasing costs over time, but also reducing that general fund support.
Okay, thank you.
It's a mouthful.
Round one. Round two. Councilmember Sims, and then Councilmember Volan.
Thank you. And Director Wason also unneglected it the first time to say, "Thank you very much." I was trying to get to some points there, but thank you for the report and all the hard work that you and your staff do. With the workers' comp savings, by my calculation, I could be wrong, but it's around $159,000, give or take, the difference between what it costs and the savings. Has that been absorbed into the operational general fund, or is that, how does that help offset costs at all?
Yeah, I mean, so even with those, we never budget an amount for, you know, it's through the workers' comp insurance program, through risk management, so, you know, it, I think it pretty much makes itself up in the rears. Is Jeff Underwood on the, no. It kind of makes itself up in the rears in terms of, we don't, you know, some of those costs, like the $170,000 on that high point year, weren't all paid in that year. They were paid in years after. So we don't often, it doesn't really hit the budget necessarily in the budget year because the injury gets paid, the cost of the injury often goes over the, you know, the regular year that we're, a cycle that we're on. So that's where that cash balance and the general fund support amount can change. That $170,000 amount from 2014 or 15 was that, probably hit over 15 and 16 because it was a long-term treatment-type injury. So that's where that cash balance and the general fund support number can fluctuate each year.
Okay, and lastly, if I may, in the period 2017 to 2022, the cost increase, of course, with recycle and waste removal, I guess I'm wondering, during that time with administration, what type of measures were either investigated, researched, enacted in order to counteract some of those obviously noticeable and consistently rising costs? Not sure, you know, I don't know if you could contain, I'm just wondering, what did we do?
Well...
Other than say, "We need more money."
Well, we, it's one of those issues that's outside of our control in a lot of ways, the amount of waste generated in the community. We're, we actively participate in recycling education programs, trying to reduce the amount that goes into the landfill compared to the recycling stream. It costs half as much to process recycling as it does to landfill solid waste. But we also attribute quite a bit of that, those initial spikes in those tonnages with the COVID pandemic. At home, you know, the number of times people were taking carryout home, we definitely saw tonnage increases that just corresponded directly with COVID. They haven't subsided as much as we had hoped by now. So, you know, we're, through active encouragement of recycling and other software, we've got a program called Recollect that we push information out through. You know, we've encouraged composting, things like that, but, you know, trying to directly impact the tons, tonnage of waste that households produce is outside of our control in a lot of ways.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Volan?
Actually, can I make one more comment on that real quick? You know, the other thing I think in the case studies that we didn't recognize when we did modernization is when you give, when you use this cart system, we used to have weight limits. You know, we still won't, you know, move a 96-gallon cart full of gravel, but, you know, I think that's also part of it, too, that, you know, with the cart system, there aren't the weight limits and the carts, you know, a 96-gallon holds quite a bit from a weight perspective.
Could you repeat the last...
A 96-gallon cart is just, it can weigh a couple hundred pounds, whereas we used to have 40-pound limits on a trash can with the sticker system, so that could also be part of it.
Councilmember Volan?
Well, I was interested in the same topic that Councilmember Sims was, about the cost of exchanging carts, and I don't know if, I'm still bothered by it, I'm having trouble formulating a question. I guess I never understood why we didn't just charge for people who were going up in cart size, as opposed to charging for either going up or going down. I mean, maybe if you can, if you can go into a little bit more detail about the logic behind charging at all for carts, I mean, shouldn't that be, as much as I want the program to pay for itself, this is the one sticking point. I don't know if either Councilmember Sims or Councilmember Flaherty feel the same way, but this is the one thing that does seem like it should be up. I don't understand why it's a disincentive for people to right-size their cart.
Couple things on this. We have a very high rental turnover market every May and August. If we, we have to have some level of cost there, not to discourage, but just to, you know, if every rental house called in August and said, "Hey, we don't want the 64, we want a 96 or a 35," we're in a much different place from a workload perspective than we are just working with regular customers. It's a lot to do with the rental market, and there's a labor cost, there's a fuel cost, there's, you know, that's what we're trying to capture. If it were up to me, it'd be $100 because then we'd cover the full cost of the cart, the full cost of the labor, and, because the cart costs have gone up over time, too. If we had to purchase carts right now, I think they're $65 to $70. When we first started the program, I think we were paying about $40 a cart.
Okay, so when you swap out a cart with another cart, can the old cart be reused?
Sometimes.
Why can't it be reused? And how often is that?
Depends, so we have a cleaning machine, a power wash cleaning machine, but if you cannot get a terrible odor out of a cart, you're not going to take that...
Can I get a what?
A terrible odor out of a cart. You're not going to take that from one customer, you know, you're not going to have a customer that just asked for a new cart and take them something that's not, so...
Do people ever switch out carts because of a terrible odor?
We encourage them to use a power washer and hopefully...
But I mean, have you ever had like a cart switching from 64 to 64?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure we probably have.
Really?
Yeah.
I mean, they should charge them $100 bucks. Remember, they're terrible odors.
Had to get down to that, you know, but, you know, and it's not something we're offering yet, but we are either, we're considering an in-house or contracted service for cart cleaning. A lot of communities that have carts like we do offer a cleaning service. Doing that in-house is going to be a terrible challenge, but there are outside contracting companies that do it as well.
You could call it a shame fee.
Yeah, I can't, there's a former Indianapolis Colts player that started a business in Indy, and it was the first time I'd seen anything like it, and I was like, "Oh."
Okay, so just to get it straight, people swap carts and it costs money to, what roughly portion of the carts that get swapped can no longer be used? Is it half, more than half, less than half? Any idea?
Ah...
You said sometimes.
I'd say so. I'd hate to put a percentage. It's probably around a third.
So a third of carts that you take back, roughly, not holding you to it, can't be reused again? They have to be recycled?
Well, either recycle or surplus to you.
Okay, so you have to keep buying carts, and they've gone up in price, they're like, more like 70 bucks?
We do have a pretty good inventory even from rollout, so we did, we went, we had a percentage higher, and then with all of the cart exchange, so that was the other thing where we ended up with a higher level of inventory of carts. If you recall, when we did the program rollout in 2017, we gave the community an opportunity to fill out a survey and say what cart sizes they wanted. About half the community or more did not fill it out, so they ended up with the default 64-gallon, and then when we did rollout and they saw their neighbor had a smaller cart that cost less, I think we did 1,500 exchanges in the first three months when it was free to do those exchanges. So we ended up with a really big inventory of 64s from that initial rollout of exchanges.
And we have finally burned through those?
Not quite. I think we've still got several hundred.
Okay. I find this whole facet of the topic interesting, and I may have more questions. Thank you.
Okay.
No, seeing none. Did you want to continue, or? Okay, let's go to the public for comment then. This is on ordinance 23-14. If you want to, please go ahead and approach the podium if you'd like to offer comment. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to speak to this item, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom. You can do that by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab in your control bar. You can also let us know you'd like to speak by sending the meeting host a chat.
If you would, please, please introduce yourself, share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
I was about ready to do that.
And then you'll have three minutes.
I want to say hello, council first. My name is David Sabag. I live in the 5th district. Isabel is my councilperson. Next year, she won't be, sorry, Isabel. I came to the council a while ago to talk trash, to say, "I want smaller trash bins." Well, it turns out that I already have the smallest trash bins, so I don't want to exchange them. However, I do want to talk about trash costs. If I use less electricity each month, Duke, my Duke bill will be reduced. If I use less gas for heating or cooling each month, my bill from Vectren, I guess, will be reduced. If I use less water each month, my bill from CBU will be reduced. Well, it turns out that I live alone, I generate very, very little trash or recyclables. I don't need to put out my trash and recyclables every week. In fact, every three weeks would probably be enough, but you're still charging me every week. I find that not very responsive city government, so I would, and it'd be very easy to, if I don't put my trash out, not to charge me, that'd be, I think, a very easy to implement. So I'm asking you, in addition to if you're going to raise trash costs, then consider those of us who don't generate much trash and don't need to put out every week, to not charge us every week for trash. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabag. Mr. Lucas, just to keep me on track, do we have any requests on Zoom?
At the moment, no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. MG, welcome, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening again, council. This is Christopher MG, not from the chamber, but as a resident of the city, homeowner of, in Sunny Slopes. And I spoke about this issue in June when it came up, and I'll reiterate some of those remarks. I was hoping we would come back and kind of split the baby, but it feels like I'm Meryl Streep on the end of a custody battle, and Kramer versus Kramer, this is just kind of expanding the fee over six years instead of all at once. And, you know, being a central city service, I think we have to have a good reason why the subsidies are no longer there. We had the lid increase last year, and I remember one of the buckets, does anybody remember the bucket? It was essential city services? Well, this isn't essential city service, it's not a utility in the same sense, since you're not getting something, you're getting something taken away. And I thought Michael Large and Adam Wason did a wonderful job in saying why we should get an increase, and we should. Costs have gone up, we want to have those vehicles maintained and changed over, so I don't have any, you know, real issue with the increase, it's just the 118% increase that we're looking at, which I think, when you look at other fees that have gone up with, within, with the city and the taxes, and property taxes, you know, we're up for another referendum from MCCSC, that we just have to think about in this, in a larger context than I think, I think we are, and not looking at simply, oh, you know, you know, the other private entities outside the incorporated area charges this much. Well, you know, there's, should be certain services that we sort of look to for a reduced price, that we're subsidizing recycling is what I'm saying, not recycling trash service, but the recycling aspect, which is, I think, definitely a public good, and as we bring people into the city, it's nice to know that one of their fees will be, will be going down in that, and it goes back to another point I made last time, the city finances. Where are we on the city finances? If the city was in financial dire straits, I think this 118% increase right away would be in order. I don't know how the city's doing financially. We had, I mentioned the lid increase, but it just seems like, like all of a sudden, these subsidies now are an issue for the city. It just seems like, where is this coming from? And if we knew, then we would have some context, which I think we don't quite see at this time. So I do respect everything that Public Works has done. I think the modernization has been wonderful and a real benefit. The customer service there is impeccable, the increase is warranted, is it warranted this much? I don't believe so, so I would pass on this particular increase. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Welcome, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Dave Askins with the B-Square Bulletin. I just have a question about the, the table that shows the amount of general fund subsidy starting in 2023 and then going through 2029. There's also a column for the estimated revenue associated with each of those price schedules. Yes, that's exactly the slide. So what was puzzling to me is that even though, compared to 2023 and 2024, with this proposed price increase, we're going to get roughly $600,000 extra dollars in revenue, the general fund subsidy stays at $1 million. And I don't think that that can be explained by simply the 3% increase in costs that's used from year to year in this entire schedule, but something that Michael Large mentioned in his presentation, that Director Wason also mentioned back in May or June, is the idea that we've been essentially, I think, managing to keep the general fund subsidy around $1 million just by not replacing vehicles as often as we really ought to, and that the general fund subsidy column here is assuming that we're actually going to get back on a reasonable schedule for replacing vehicles. So that... schedule for replacing vehicles. So that would be the answer I would give guessing, but I'm just trying to get, I'm hoping to get confirmation that that's why the million dollars in 2023 stays the same at a million dollars in 2024, in which case I think if my theory is correct, we should be buying some new trash trucks next year. Thanks. That's the question.
Thank you, Mr. Askins. Mr. Lucas, I'm not seeing any more comments here in chambers. Anybody on Zoom?
No, I see no one.
Okay. Let's come back to council then for additional questions. Councilmember Volan?
I'm going to take up Mr. Sabag's question, although I think he's stepped out. The other thing I don't understand, and it's a much bigger deal, and you know, the question I'm going to ask is, why is it that, I mean, I don't agree with Mr. Sabag that just because, I mean, there is a fixed cost for the water bill, the gas bill, the electric bill that people pay even if they use less water, gas, or electric. That is not true with sanitation. And it does not make sense, and I take Public Works' word for it, that smaller bins and thirty-five gallons are impractical. So why can't we offer, this is the thing I've asked about for years, offer a discount program for not putting out your bin, offer some kind of a rebate? If we have to raise the rates further in order to give people a rebate, that would just be, make it more equitable. What is Public Works' take on that?
A couple takes on it. First, it's, it's, what I alluded to, the cart management. The cart management is a huge aspect of why pay the.
Of what?
The cart management is a huge part of why it's so difficult to try to offer a program like this. With the fourteen thousand, six hundred carts, when address, like, you think of every cul-de-sac in, in the city. When, you know, the carts get put back down, it's often, you know, the three, four houses aren't often getting their carts back. So it's, it's the cart management side of it. It's, you know, while we thought technology in this was going to solve a lot of our problems, the administrative burden of trying to track each household that we service, so to, the administrative burden of tracking that and trying to offer a rebate program is, is just going to be extensive. When you think of the units A, B, and C scenario, how do you know if it wasn't unit A that left it out or if it was unit C that left it out? We've, there's just, there's enough complicating factors that we're trying to keep the costs low enough for the smallest cart sizes that, you know, that there's, that it encourages the use of the smallest carts. But pay-as-you-throw is just some, in that regard, is something we've not been able to get our hands around and, and find it to be unmanageable in a lot of ways.
I'm torn whether to call that the least inadequate or the most adequate answer I've heard yet.
Let's go with most.
But I will say, okay, so the administrative burden is significant. But, I mean, we specifically bought carts with an RFID chip in them. It's one thing, I mean, there's a number of strategies I can think of off the top of my head to address the triplex situation that you suggested. Perhaps the bins could be different colors at a, at a house or a building that has more than one unit so that they can be told apart. There's no reason why they have to be identical colors when there's multiple units in a building. But is the RFID chip just hard to read? Is it that people take in their bins and they don't care which bin they take back in? Again, but that's an argument for giving the carts different colors, like, it's like home and away kits for a soccer team, you know, like you have two or three different kits, depending on how many, like, we don't serve more than households of four. So why can't we do that? What is it with the RFID chip that, is it, it's hard to read? It's an interesting tag-team answering approach.
Well, so we've been talking about this, you know, for years. And, you know, yes, the RFID's can, they, they have about a twelve-foot radius. So if you have two carts right next to each other, it's probably, it's going to have a hard time discerning exactly which address with the GPS system is affiliated to the cart if you've got, it, out in Hyde Park or in areas where it's, where you've got larger lots and the carts are further apart, it's easier to do something like this. But in the core of the downtown where you've got addresses on addresses, the RFID reader, it's accurate to an extent, but it's also, when it, when it cross-references that to the GPS address, there, with the houses that are so close, it's easy to have an error there. And so that, that's part of the accuracy that we worry about as well.
So you mean that, that the chip isn't measured when the truck lists the bin, because you have direct contact with the bin at that point?
It is, but is that, is that bin in front of three oh one or three oh three when it's getting picked up by the truck?
But, I mean, the RFID chip is tied to a house.
What's that?
The RFID chip in the bin is tied to an address.
But it also geocap, it compares the GPS location to make sure you're at an address. So again, it, we're not in a position to offer this. It's not something that we've been, that we're willing, that, it's just not a program that we're suggesting.
And so why, do the carts cost more because they have an RFID chip in them? If we're not going to use it, why are we getting them still?
I mean, the, we're, we have a supply of carts with them, in them already, and so that, they're there. You know, so when we exchange a cart, it's going to have an RFID chip. It's a, it's, it's simply a, with fourteen thousand, six hundred trash carts out there, and with the addresses and the, the compact nature of the downtown, it's, it's something that's just unmanageable for us. And we've, we don't have the ability to go with a program like that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Additional questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, as I noted earlier, as we discussed earlier, Mr. Wason, the initial increase is thirty-four percent for the smallest carts. So that's, that's a significant amount of monthly increase for some of our residents that could make a difference. So if somebody has trouble paying that amount, where can they get financial assistance?
So with, we partner with the City of Bloomington Utilities and the South Central Community Action Program for utility bill reductions. So folks can work with SCAP, South Central Community Action Program for eligibility there. We don't actually have, we haven't utilized our full budget on that year over year, so it's something we've been trying to encourage when, you know, customer service gets a call about, you know, we're struggling to pay that bill, trying to get folks through the program. There's an application process. You have to do some income eligibility, I believe, with CAPS, so, but trying to encourage that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? If not, final comments? No. Councilmember Sims and Councilmember Rosenberg.
Thank you. Again, gentlemen, I want to thank you administration for your hard work. Actually, I'm talking to an empty podium. I don't want to do that. I guess I can. It don't really matter. You know, there's some good things about our operation that we're doing. And in my neighborhood, far west side, there's a program within Public Works, or sanitation, I should say, that actually helps some of our physically challenged paying accounts. I mean, and to me, that, that's impressive. I really like that. I had to call once or go through the, the reporting, the online reporting, because the lid was busted on my recycle cart. And of course, if you all see the trucks, those things, when they reach out and grab it, I mean, that's not a love hug. That's not a love hug. So, and I was really glad that I didn't get charged for that. But they came out and just, you know, zip, zip, put on a new one, zip, zip, and we're gone. So those are good things about the service that we provide. Some of the things that really troubled me, and particularly about trash service, trash removal service, and I think I've heard it once or twice, a program to pay for itself. I mean, that's, that's troublesome to me. And I know the costs are rising. I know we need to do something to reduce the cost. But it's hard for me to see a program unless it's on the backs and shoulders of people in this community that really can ill afford to tote that load for it to program to pay for itself. So there's going to be some subsidy, I think. I think we're just a matter of debating how much, maybe. But I really think trash pickup, and I heard this, and I believe it, it's one of our basic and essential city services. It's like Bloomington Police Department, Bloomington Fire Department, snow removal, trash on the heels of this body that just approved a lid increase that generated approximately sixteen million dollars. So maybe it's a matter of reprioritizing some budget things and, and some of those things that we're doing as a city in order to release that, that burden. There's going to be, citizens and users are going to have to increase some things. I just researched today about recycle pickup and how much that's changed over the years. And I tell you, if I cannot recycle Styrofoam in egg cartons, that goes into my trash bin. And now I got to pay for that because China's not taking it. I mean, I get all that, but, but what do we do? I mean, it's on the back. So I'm, you know, I love our service. I love our staff, and we do some good things. I'm just, that's an essential service that I'm not so sure should be borne by not only the taxpayers, but let's say, ratepayers. I mean, we mentioned utilities. I sit on utility service board, so I know they're programmed to help people who get in trouble and send them to, you know, SCAP and all these things. Those are good programs, too. Nobody uses that money for some reason. I mean, all those budgets go untapped. You said yours does. Theirs do. You see? But I think this, it'll be getting more help or more use moving forward. So that's just my comments. And again, thank you guys for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg?
I will be brief. I just want to say, I think this looks good. It's a good first step. I could say a lot more. I think about where I want to see our trash service to go. But I really appreciate that we had some pretty serious conversations here, and then this got brought back, and I feel ready to support it. So thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I appreciate the additional work on this ordinance. And of course, I, I recognize that the ordinance contains more than just the increase in the monthly fees for trash and recycling pickup. There's also elimination of the, of the mention in our municipal code about the leaf pickup, which we have, trans, we are moving away from, and we have different options for that now. And, you know, the, the exchange fee is being cut in half for cart exchange, and the cost of picking up large items and appliances is increasing to reflect the actual cost of labor for those items. So it's not only the monthly fees, but of course, those are the hottest among these topics. And I, I look at this in the context of all residents of Bloomington, and as we know, over sixty percent of our residents are renters, and most of them, most of the renters live in buildings that have more than four units, and therefore, they do not get the benefit of the sanitation services that we're talking about. They do still pay into our property taxes, which is our biggest tax revenue for city operations, because it's, it gets factored into their rent. And of course, they pay the local income tax that we've been talking about, and they, they pay all the taxes that property owners do in one, directly or indirectly. And yet, they do not get the benefit of this service. And therefore, I think it's, it's very important, and I'm very happy to see that we are transitioning away from subsidizing the service through general fund money and moving towards a model where the people who use the service and benefit from the service will pay for the service. So I'm in favor of that. I think that's an equitable thing to do. I do appreciate that this would be spread out over six years. I said five previously. That's a mistake. It's six years. And I, I am, of course, you know, I, I do have concern for people who struggle to pay their monthly bills, and especially the first year, it'll be a thirty-four percent increase. And that's why I was inquiring about if there's financial assistance for people. And there is, and we need to get the word out about that. So I am in support of this ordinance, and I hope that it will pass this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan, then Councilmember Smith?
Raise his hand first.
Okay. Councilmember Smith?
Well, thanks. I appreciate all the work that Mr. Wason, Mr. Large have done, and lots of good information. And I, I can't support it. And my rationale has been since the beginning is that in the context of, that we raised the lid for the express purpose of some essential services, I assumed that meant that we were going to hold the line on a lot of things because we did the lid, and then the school system did a levy a couple of years ago, and we're going to do, we knew another one was coming. So in that respect, I, I really, I'm worried that we're making Bloomington more expensive all the time by small amounts. And it, it's a concern of mine for just everybody that lives here. So I can't support it, and I, and I wish that we would, Muncie, the City of Muncie pays for their trash collection through property taxes. So I wish we would do that, and it, it would be up to the administration to do that. They could do that if they wanted, but they're taking a different approach to this. So I can't support it. I, I really appreciate everything that Public Works does. It's not a reflection on them. They're really excellent group, and the services are great. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan?
I have to disagree with my colleague. I understand his argument. I don't think his, that his problem with this proposal takes into account that, among other things, we have a climate-related reason for addressing the issue. Now, the, six years ago or so, when the sanitation modernization program came in, we addressed the issue that, at the time, the trash sticker, which I think was a program that he was more supportive of, but the trash sticker didn't really account for the fact that we had to run the truck no matter whether bags were put out or not. And so Mr. Sabag's concern about having, you know, like, if I use less, I pay less, like, there still has to be a base fee. That argument made sense. That's why I supported the sanitation modernization program in the first place. But we do have this climate-related mandate. It was even before we were talking about climate. We know we need to incentivize the reduction of trash. And the one thing that the trash tag program did right was it incentivized people to reduce trash. And a consistent critique I've heard of the program since it was implemented is that it doesn't, it does a cruder version of it. You have thirty-five, sixty-four, ninety, ninety-six gallons, and that's it. But we can't make a smaller bin. It's not practical. The trucks would actually, you can't have a bin smaller because the truck would devour it. And so we don't have a way to capture the one thing that the previous program did right. The subsidy that some of my colleagues have been looking to reduce, that I agree with them on, has been an issue for years for some members here, unlike what Mr. MG said in his comments earlier. This is not sudden. We have been talking about this consistently for years. It was a concern when the program was proposed. It was a concern when the program was proposed, and I still have constituents commenting on this to me. I don't want to overstate the case, but it's one of the most common complaints that I hear as a council member is, why can't I get something back for not putting out my trash? Now, for those people in need, I would gladly see the retention of the general fund subsidy. If, let's say, that fund costs $100,000, that's not something we need to build into the rate. That could come out of the general fund. We're subsidizing people in need. But it sounds like in order to do what I've been seeking all this time, we, I mean, there's a second subsidy here. There's the subsidy of the general fund, and then there's the subsidy, I mean, we're, for the convenience of the trash bins, we're not doing as fine-tuned a job of incentivizing trash reduction. So we know from Public Works' own data tonight that through technology, we can reduce injuries significantly. We know we can do it with technology. But it sounds like we need to increase fees even more than are being proposed now in order to properly be able to incentivize people to generate less trash. What Public Works needs in order to do that is a combination that, of unknown quantities, of more technology and more personnel to enable this goal that I for one have pursued so long that many constituents have asked for, for so long. But it shouldn't be a holy grail. Like, what I'd love to get is a sense of how much more it would cost in order for Public Works to be able to do that. Again, let's talk about, it's, maybe it's not just four-unit households that need different kit colors to tell the bins apart. Maybe in the denser core neighborhoods, we need multiple colors in order to be able, people to be able to say, this is my bin. Maybe we only need to sign up households that want to have their bin tracked. Maybe not everybody wants to get the dollar or two rebate that it might be. There's got to be some way we can do it. At the very least, we need to quantify it. We need to establish, well, what it would, what would it cost to do it? Instead of hearing that, I hear, we just can't. And that, that shouldn't be an answer any of us settles for. So, I mean, if Public Works wanted to impress us by doing that research and saying it would double the trash fees that we're proposing tonight, I guess I'll shut up. But we don't have that data. We don't know. And I'd like to know what, what it would cost in order to make it a practical program to reduce the fund. Because again, even though we're going to solve one subsidy with this proposal, that second, maybe it's a lesser subsidy, but it's still significant, and we should try to solve it. Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll invite Clerk Bolton to call the roll on ordinance 2314.
Can I raise my hand?
Yes. I'm sorry. Did I not see your hand?
No, I was unsure whether I was going to say anything. I actually want to pause just for procedural note, which is, Councilmember Sims' comments in particular about finding the right balance and that sort of thing made me wonder if we, if there were members who didn't want to try to adjust this in some way or amend it and take another week as opposed to calling the question tonight. If not, that's okay. I wanted to just make sure we acknowledged that possibility and thought about it.
Question, is there a motion to, yeah. Councilmember Volin?
I'd like to chime in and say that I would be interested to hear Mr. Sims' answer, too, because if we can get a little bit more data, you know, we didn't set up this schedule this year in order to approve stuff faster. We just wanted to, I mean, we should take more time if another week might help, or even two.
Councilmember Smith, did you want to come, Sims, did you want to comment?
I may not, but Sims does.
But Sims does.
Yeah. I mean, and it's a little bit tough, because to me, this is a basic city service. So we're still talking about compromising on something that I don't think we should compromise on. So that's the tough part in the first place. Second thing is, and not to, I saw the reaction when we just said that, you know, and it's like, ugh, ugh, ugh. So, you know, and again, I'm not trying to call you out or anything. That's not the deal. But I'm a people person, and I notice things like that. You know, I notice all the hand stuff and just the yak-a-yak. I notice all those things. Not that that is yes or no. I'm not saying that. I think Councilmember Flaherty, I think that's a decent idea, because there's so many components, and we're focused on trash pickup. And maybe we could get rid of some of that other stuff and then focus on something that to me is more equitable for this overall community. And not that I want to kick the can down or prolong this, but I think that's a good idea, Councilmember Flaherty, and I'd be willing to entertain that.
I don't know what's on my mind.
Oh, sorry, I didn't get.
I'd like to hear what Councilmember Smith has to say on that as well.
Second.
Oh.
What are you saying?
Madam Chair, I move postponement of this ordinance to the next regular session.
On August 9th.
August 9th.
Well, but before we do that, and good motion, what specifically are we waiting for? I mean, what is it? Were there subs, specifics, Councilmember Flaherty? I don't, because I don't want to just say, go back and fix it because they did. They've already done this a couple of times. So what are we wanting them to fix now? Or is that something we talk about later if we postpone it?
Is this a plan we should make now?
No. Not yet.
It's a type. You had such a forlorn look on your face.
I can weigh in. I mean, I'm not sure. It seems like it takes some conversation or discussions, a handful of folks meeting to talk about what sticking points are for them. I support the ordinance as drafted, but I know we've got different ways folks are thinking about how the general fund should be used, if at all, for the folks who receive this essential city service, acknowledging that other folks don't receive this essential city service. And so what balance to strike there and what's manageable, I think, is worth trying to hash out, because we have a largely sort of divided group, and there may not be majority support for any one single thing that we've heard yet. So it seems, yeah, it seems like there's support for some level of increase, but maybe nothing we've seen yet. That's all.
Okay. Councilmember Volin.
From my point of view, in addition to what both of them have said, you know, I would like to inquire more about the question that I raised, the rhetorical question I just raised. I'd also like to point out that there are two members that are not here who I think would like to weigh in, and I think their, their opinions are important as well. So the number of reasons why I think it might be worth postponing. Mr. Sims.
Anything further? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Could we ask Mr. Weis for his feedback on the motion that's on the table?
Mr. Weis.
I would for a vote tonight. I would. We, for several reasons. We came to you in June with upwards of five options. There were two other amendments possibly considered. We've, we've done a lot of work on this. We spent a lot of staff time on it. We're entering a very busy period of time for Public Works, myself and all the staff, being August turnover, and we've put a lot of work into this. We feel like this was the compromise that the council was looking for to, based on the last meeting. I'll note at the last meeting, the council, the full council wasn't here at that time either, and that may have affected the outcome of that vote that night. So my preference is that we would have a vote tonight on the ordinance as presented. So thank you.
Additional comments from council members? We have a motion to postpone on the table. Any further comments? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion to postpone ordinance 2314 to August, our regular session on August 9th?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
That passes 7-0. We will take up ordinance 2314 again next Wednesday, August 9th. That takes us to legislation for first readings.
Yes, one moment. Madam President, I move that ordinance 2315 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. Clerk Bolton, will you please read?
Ordinance 2315 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel regarding amending 2.76.040 entitled Boundaries to expand the service area of the Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Volin. It would authorize Bloomington Transit to expand services within the boundaries of Monroe County through appropriate interlocal agreements that specify exact areas and equitable funding mechanisms for those services.
And you will take up ordinance 2315 next at our regular session, also next Wednesday, August 9th. So that takes us to our second of two periods of public comment. I don't see a lot left in chambers to offer comment, but if you did, please raise your hand. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes. There are members of the public on Zoom that would like to speak now. Please let us know by using the raise hand feature, which you can find under your control bar, under the reactions button or the more button, or you can send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any requests here in chambers. Are we seeing anybody on Zoom?
There's no. There's on Zoom.
Okay. In which case, let's come back to council. We'll take up matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas.
Just one item. President Scambalory has expressed an interest in scheduling a council work session next Friday at noon for the purpose of hearing from county officials on their efforts to locate a new site for the jail. So I am hoping to gauge interest tonight from other members in holding that meeting. That would be next Friday at noon in the McCloskey Room if there's sufficient interest in scheduling that. So if there is interest and see a few folks, if someone could make a motion to hold that, that would be appropriate.
I will move to hold a council work session on August 11th at noon for the purposes of discussing possible jail locations.
Could you second with her? Okay. It moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Let's do a roll call vote on that. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion to hold a work session on Friday, August 11th at noon for the purposes of discussing site selection for the new jail?
Okay. We'll start with Councilmember Rosenberg.
Yes.
Sims?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
That passes 5-2. Thank you, everyone. We will have that scheduled for August 11th. Is there anything else, Mr. Lucas?
No.
Okay. That's it. Any other business for the good of the order? If not, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.